I used to sleep in.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as Robin Burris leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as well.
Father, thank you so much for bringing us together safely. Thank you for the change in the weather and the seasons we get to partake in. Be with us tonight as we make decisions and help us to do the right by the city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call please, Maura.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Woodham.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
Ms. Lively. Mr. Piercey.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Ms. Yuen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the council from the seat provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. No one tonight, chief, thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone tonight? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and actions items is listed. Claims report. Claims dated December 10, 2024 through January 13, 2025. Meeting minutes. City Council meeting minutes, December 9, 2024. Historic Preservation Commission meeting minutes, July 9, 2024. Historic Preservation Commission meeting minutes, October 1, 2024. Historic Preservation Commission meeting minutes, November 5, 2024. Permit report, December 2024. Police report, December 2024. Fire report, December 2024. Budget report, November 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions of city staff?
I have one question that permit building, there's that 716 grant, is that the property that was in, they were, they came and had questions about it, are they going to demolish the house there, are they just building new on that one?
It's already gone.
Gone.
It's gone.
It's gone, okay. Yeah.
That answer your question?
The question, it wasn't what I would buy before, okay.
All right. Anyone else hearing or seeing none may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Yuen.
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you. New business, mayoral appointments. There's no mayor's report tonight. Mayoral appointments. City Clerk, city collector, Robin Throneberg, term expires April 2025. First off, he's going to be sworn in as city collector, so Robin, can you come up here?
Wait, do you have to do a, get the?
Oh, you want me, I'm supposed to have a vote on this. Is there a motion to approve her as collector? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That's the first time we've ever had one. Sophie, bring your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and, go ahead.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city collector.
Of the office of city collector.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Robin as our city clerk?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city clerk.
Of the office of city clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. So I'll probably call her Jill for at least six months. At this time, I have a proclamation to read, mayoral proclamation, February 1, 2025, as Mud Puppy Day. Whereas the Sangamon River is on the national, Illinois National Area's Inventory, honored for its rich variety of aquatic resources, and whereas the mud puppy, a state threatened species, is found in the waters of the Sangamon River. And whereas the presence of the mud puppy is a sign of a healthy river, and whereas the mud puppy is active in the winter and is unique in its aquatic lifestyle and colorful external gills, and whereas the Land Conservation Foundation and the City of Monticello share an interest in the health of the mud puppy and the Sangamon River, and whereas the Land Conservation Foundation's annual Mud Puppy Festival invites the community to learn about and celebrate this remarkable creature and the waters where it lives. Now therefore, I, Larry Stoner, Mayor of the City of Monticello, do prefer February 1, 2025 of this year as Mud Puppy Day in the City of Monticello, and urge all citizens to understand, enjoy, and protect the unique natural resources in and along the Sangamon River in Payette County. This is an annual proclamation, and it's an annual event that'll probably be taking place at.
Monarch.
Monarch, I'm sorry. It's cold in here, now my brain is freezing, so welcome you all to go to that February 1, Saturday, February 1, okay? Resolution 2025-01, a resolution to accept an agreement to perform the annual City of Monticello audit. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's required to appoint an auditor to conduct a thorough examination of financial accounts of the city. The city's utilized May, Cocaine, and King for a number of years, if not decades. Steve Grony does a wonderful job of that with the assistance of Maura Metcalf. You were provided with a copy of that agreement in your packets. It is within the budgeted amount for this FY 2025. This would be for our 2024 fiscal year. Is recommended city council discuss and approve Resolution 2025-01.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-01?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of Carey or staff? Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call, please, Robin.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
Pass.
Pass.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the purchase of property. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This transaction was approved in this year's FY 2025 budget. Will actually trade in a 1999 Ford F-450 dump truck for a new 20, I forget what year it is, 2022 Ram 1500 for the survey vehicle that Dobson uses. It is within the budgeted amount, and we will trade in and purchase with Rick Riedings here locally. Is recommended city council discuss and approve ordinance 25-02.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-02?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
One more chance, questions, comments? Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by, between Monticello and Clermont Property Holdings LLC, Monticello Tax Increment Financing District 2. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. 777 West Bridge, which is where Pizza Hut was, was redeveloped by a previous owner back in 2017. DMH moved in and had a lease all the way through 2037, even though they vacated the property in 2021. So the previous owner didn't have much of an incentive to sell or fill the property because the rent was already paid for the remaining term, but we don't like seeing buildings sit dark for a number of reasons, so we like to when we have a major building. So we were fortunate when Clermont Property Holdings came and purchased the property and was able to secure a lease with OSF, which opened last month, and that's letting DMH out of their lease. They did, as part of the lease agreement, have to make a significant number of improvements, a parking lot, to the interior, and back in November before these improvements were made, they approached about it, approached me about a TIF agreement. Because of timing and scheduling, we couldn't get it on the agenda before you until this time. But the recommendation of staff, because this property does contribute a pretty significant amount into the TIF, would be a 50% reimbursement of the TIF increment every year until that amount of $19,960 is reimbursed. Should be about four years, I anticipate it being less, but that is a TIF-eligible expense. The TIF redevelopment plan, which kind of dictates what we can do with TIF funds, of the 15 goals, it meets three of them, which is more than normal, usually it's just one or two. So like I said, we recommend a pay-as-you-go reimbursement, which means after the property taxes are paid for that year, 50% of the increment generated would be reimbursed to the developer until that is paid, which again is about four years. So it's recommended you discuss and vote on this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-03?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from city staff? Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
Ms. Yuen.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance in the City of Monticello and Dunwalt LLC concerning the property at 107 West Main Street, Monticello, Illinois, Monticello Business District. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we typically do, I'll be giving you an overview of the whole program, and each one will just vary in some slight details to get you out of here quicker because it's cold. So this round for the spring building improvement grant applications, we accepted applications from December 1 through 16th, actually. We received eight applications, six are up for your consideration this evening, all of those six are historic properties. We have one that we're still negotiating with, I say "we" being the review committee, and one that was actually sent back for revisions. But a significant number of private investment in this particular round, if all eight applications are considered, it would be just under $800,000 worth of private investment, so that's pretty substantial. The review committee, again, is made up of a representative of the business community in the chamber, we have someone from the planning and zoning board, now Elaine sat on that role prior to her council seat, to make sure we're in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and then someone from the historic preservation side to make sure we're following along with the historic accuracy and aestheticness. So it gets a lot of vetting prior to coming to your way, we do have some back and forth that happens, but the first one up for discussion is 107 West Main, which is Dunwalt property. It's right next door to the west of the Dairy Queen building, and the owner, Dunwalt LLC, they also own Bespoke Gift Company, that's the business in the back, it used to be the storefront, and then the front business is On Point, which is the ballet supply. So they have requested funds to help with repairing or replacing a 20 by 30 section, which is the back section of their roof. It has a pretty significant water issue, and it's going to start compromising the remainder of the structure. The estimated project cost is $9,000, and recommended reimbursement is 50% of the total cost, I shouldn't say of materials, the total cost of the project up to $4,000, $4,500.
Thank you.
I'll get there.
Hundred. That's it?
That's it.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-04?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, Kelly? Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-05, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Dalton Caitlin Temples concerning the property located at 111 North State Street, Monticello, Illinois, Monticello Business District. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the State Farm Building, which is actually circa 1956, yes, that is actually historic at this point. They have 15 windows that are up to almost 70 years old, some are inoperable, some are needing some repair anyway, they're all inefficient, and they have requested 50% up to $10,000. Total project cost is estimated at $32,532, and the committee recommends 50% reimbursement up to $10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-05?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-07, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and RNS Unlimited Incorporated concerning the property located at 114 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois, in the Monticello Business District. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. This property is where there's no place like home, is on the first floor, and then Wells and Garbarzic Law Offices are on the second floor, so it's the northeast corner of Washington and Charter Street. They would like to continue kind of the trend they did for the two buildings to the east and finish that facade. What we, the committee really liked about this was they were taking a lot of their design inspiration from some of the previous photos in your packet, you'll see there's some from the early 1900s, and so they're going to be replicating a lot of that, so that's pretty exciting to do. But the estimated project cost is $30,251 and some change, and building, it's for facade remodel, including painting, electrical, and signage, and the committee recommends 50% of reimbursement up to $10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-06?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-07, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Leffjes LLC concerning the property located at 121 North State Street, Monticello, Illinois, Monticello Business District. Kelly.
Thank you. This is the property also known as the Monticello Professional Building, just right across the street and down a smidge. The owners have put a substantial amount of investment into the property with painting and interior remodel, and they would like to do some window replacement, there's some cracked windows, and then on the south side of the building, they actually built a supporting wall, so they don't need those windows anymore, they would be covering them and then doing some minor painting. So window replacement and facade work. Estimated project cost is $14,355, and the committee recommends 50% of reimbursement up to $7,177.95.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-07?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? May have a roll call, please.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-08, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Willow Tree Missions Nonprofit Corporations concerning the property located at 100 East Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois, Monticello Business District. Kelly.
More guys, you're almost done. Everyone knows where the Willow Tree building is in downtown, they have some, they've done a substantial amount of improvements already, we're super grateful that they're taking such a massive building and fully utilizing it at this point, but it needs some masonry work and some tuck pointing, they have some seafish that happens and kind of floods things inside and causes some damage. So estimated project cost is $25,000, and their, the committee, review committee is requesting a 50% of reimbursement up to $10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-08? This is our second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I know that we, how is the $10,000 determined? We've discussed it before, is there ever been a talk about going over?
Yep, you guys have awarded in the past a higher amount.
I mean, I would be, I would be willing to entertain that for these, this group. One, they're a non-for-profit, two, they're a huge asset to the community, both, like you said, redeveloping that building that's set unused for quite some time, and also for what they do for our community members, I would entertain giving them at least 50% of the project and giving them the extra $2,500, if not more, I mean.
Do we have that authority?
You can amend. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second. So it's 12,000, 500.
12,500, you go into 50%.
Okay.
That was a good one, Ryan.
I got a vote on the amendment. Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions?
Okay, Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Woon.
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-09?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Where we proceed. Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
They would like to do some facade work and some signage, and I think future plans including continuing the awning down the sides of the building on that south side. But as it relates to this, we're just talking about the front, there's some renderings in your packets. Total estimated project cost is 20,031, and the review committee is recommending a 50% reimbursement up to 10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 202509?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we proceed? Hearing or seeing none may have a roll call.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Ms. Woon?
Yes.
Should passes.
Thank you. That was good, Kelly, you did, you did a good job this evening. Moving on to Alderman's reports, I'll start with Mike Coon.
Hey, I think this, the city's done a great job on the two snows that we've had, roads ready, this has been excellent. Kudos to them.
Very good. Yep. I do not have any reports, I just hope everybody had a happy holiday.
Sounds good. I think we should wait.
Nothing. Tom?
Nothing.
Justin?
You got it?
Just echo Mr. Coon's sentiment. Everything was done very efficiently and quickly.
Thank you. Tom?
Nothing.
I want to say thanks to Kelly and everybody involved in this program, the redevelopment agreement, because it's awesome that we're able to do this. And it's, as I was telling Alderman Carey before, it's nice knowing that when it, by the time it comes to us, it's been fully vetted and are there, I mean, it's, it's.
Yep.
Basically, if Kelly says it's good, it's good. So it is, it's nice to, it's, it's a nice program. So thank you for all the work you put in.
Thank you.
No, sir.
No. Did Andrea nothing tonight? Police chief's report. Chief Ross?
We did receive a visit from the Illinois Training Standards Board. They did a quick audit of all of our training. We're 100% in compliance, no deficiencies. We're doing a little bit better than I think some of our surrounding agencies. So with that being said, Faithful Doherty, a new officer, did start the academy last Sunday, passed her physical test. She's already on to week two, she'll graduate, I believe, it's the third week of April. We are, myself, the school resource officer, Washington School, High School, and school admin are working on a reunification drill set for roughly April or May of this year to kind of see how things can work out. We're doing a few different things that we did from when we met in theirs. We're meeting Thursday with city staff to kind of go through some options that we may have, so we'll be setting that up. And then kudos to Officer Wooten, along with the guys with Monticello Fire and Kirby Ambulance. They had to save Friday evening from an overdose. Gave a gentleman three doses of Narcan, brought him back, so good job on, on that. Rarely do you get there in time to sometimes do some good, and they, they got there pretty quick, so they did great.
Any comments or questions of the chief? I think he's done. Thanks a lot. Fire chief's report, John.
Mayor, um, I can go with you, we were already at another call, so as soon as that call came in, man, we were right there, so it really worked out. Brought her out, and then a bunch of other guys, so, yeah, it was good, it was good. So last year we had a banner year. We, last year we had set a record with 499 calls. This year we did 631 calls, so we're up over almost 26% over last year. We did lose a firefighter because Ronald Wilson, Casey Wooten, so.
A driver.
So if anybody knows, anybody who watches me on the firefighter, we'd certainly like to, we certainly need members. As, as the volume goes up too, we certainly need more people. Last year we did 1,244 hours of training, and so a good year for that. Basically, that's about all I have, so.
Any comments or questions for John? We certainly do appreciate that happens. I feel safe. They bring that big truck up when they come to call you off, it's, it's, it's the whole neighborhood, I love it. Okay.
Big for, we gotta bring it.
I know. City administrators report, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.